racial tension raising presentation is beyond wrong. This is very, this is very, the very opposite I think of that. This is the very opposite of Martin Luther King. This is treating people by the color of their skin. This is an attempt to create or raise racial problems. This racial tension creating or raising session seems to have only one purpose. To make students feel like there is something wrong with their, their skin color, or something wrong with other students' skin color. That's it.
I mean, I'll just offer that that is, I don't think Mr. Altman was on the presentation to our staff. He is welcome to log in as our, anybody who has the link for presentations this week to our students. But that couldn't be a greater mischaracterization of the type of training Ms. Hollins does.
Okay. Any other public comments? Please state your name and address.
May I?
You can be welcome to the bottom of the table.
So my name is Betsy Saltzberg. That's S-A-L-T-Z-B-E-R-G. Betsy is with an I-D.
Thank you. I'm sorry, but I have to ask you to keep your mask on.
I have a health issue. I have asthma. So I do have a legal notice and I'm happy to bring it over to you. I'm happy to bring it over to you, sir. I don't have to wear a mask. I am well social distanced. The issue I want to bring up is-
Sorry ma'am, I need your address.
And if you like, if you prefer, I will put my face shield on. Would that make you more happy? No.
We just need your address.
Yes. So I'm going to give you my address and tell you I am here on behalf of several Beachwood parents. I am 3030 Bramerton Road, Pepper Pike, Ohio. Why am I here? I have been receiving a multitude of emails from my clients' parents. I'm a child advocate. I'm a child psychologist. I'm a political conservative. This is why I believe I have been receiving a deluge of email from parents of your students right here in Beachwood. I promised them I'd be here today and I don't want to let them down. When I saw the mandatory color of trauma presentation email, I was beyond distressed, disturbed, and disgusted. I have a myriad of questions to ask and I will try to keep it really, really short. But I'd like to address whichever member here has the most knowledge and information about child development. So who might that be, please? And please tell me there is someone that doesn't understand child and brain development.
This is not a back and forth. Just please read your comments.
I'll be happy to make my comments.
Thanks.
There are so many, I'm not sure where to start. So I'll just start where I wrote them off. They're in no special order. Did the board or whoever brought these ladies in, and I do want to know-
I just, I don't mean to interrupt you, but I want you just to, so you can page yourself. You have three minutes, the comments are in three minutes.
Sure, sure, sure. Why don't I just list the questions and then I'm going to leave everyone and whoever is watching virtually, I'd like to leave you and all you here with these questions. One, did any of you take your black, politically conservative parents into account or consideration when you hatched this plan to bring in these two ladies to talk about color of trauma? I don't even know what that means. I'm at least of average ability. I don't know what color of trauma means. I'd like to know what makes the members or anyone else here think that they can legislate values and morality that start in the home, that come from the home and from parents? Did any of you ask the parents if they wanted this presentation for their children? The parents that came to me said they were never asked. They fear retribution if they should come to this forum. That's why I'm here, because they know I'm not afraid. And I don't have anything to lose, ladies and gentlemen. Um, in order that I don't bypass the three minutes, though, I have many, many other comments. The most disturbing paragraph in this email is that bonus points will be, uh, let me restate that, that men, this is a mandatory assembly and attendance will be taken. Gee, what does that mean for the student who does not attend? You talk about bonus points being given for English. You know what my first thought was? Gee, I wonder why they don't, they don't throw math or any other topic, subject in here? Why is it only English? Just asking. Two, what happens to a student who does not attend? Are bonus points taken away? I want to know, they want to know, but they're afraid to ask, ladies and gentlemen. I want answers so I can give them to these parents. They won't come to you. They're afraid for their children to be bullied. I am interested and they are interested in knowing how these ladies were chosen to give this seminar. And they want to know what they're being paid. And so do I. One of you mentioned that this was for two, three hour sessions. We are interested in knowing what their fee is. I want to know which one of you, if any, reviewed the curriculum of these two ladies before you allowed them to come here and put this seminar on for you? And now before all the students of Beachwood schools? And the parents want to know too. And we want to review that curriculum. I know I want to. My fear is that this is going to spread to other school districts, any school district. I want to know what it make, what makes you think it's your job to raise other parents' children? Their values, their morals? This is not part of an academic curriculum. This belongs in the home. I have so much more, I'm going to leave it at that. If any of you has any questions for me, I'm happy to answer them. But I imagine you don't do that in this forum? Well, you're not going to answer that either. Okay, so, that's it. Thank you.
This is, this is a public comment session. It's not-
Okay, I've, I've not-
That's typical in any public meeting.
Yeah, I've not been to this before, but I, I did not want to exceed my time, so thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Hi. My name is Mary Taylor, 21413 Howard Road. I'm sorry, I'm sorry you didn't hear your address. I apologize. 21413 Howard Road. I'm going to read this, um, just so I can make sure that, you know, it flows a little bit. I've been a Beachwood resident for over 20 years. My kids live here. I have two doctors, one with double masters, finance. And here's where I start. I was perplexed for a while, as to why the Beachwood excellence model was being gutted and had accelerated over the past few years. What's changed? Years and decades prior, students made friends based on personalities, similarities, differences, and interests in academics, sports, music, clubs, associations, et cetera. They studied together, carpool together, went on trips together, went to each other's houses together, uh, went out to eat together, planned school activities together. The athletes, cheerleaders, and band members rode together on school buses to games all over northeast Ohio together. They laughed in pride, win or lose together. Band members went to band camp together. They ran bake sales together. Parents took turns running the concession stands during games together. Parents sat together at games and cheered on each other's, uh, on the team members. They took pictures at homecoming, prom, and other events and went to restaurants and home parties after together. They congratulated each other when they were receiving their acceptance letters to the colleges and universities that they applied to and consoled each other when they didn't get into the school of their choice. They were never surprised when Beachwood school system was either in first, second, or third place consistently year after year in northeast Ohio or tops within the state of Ohio for academic achievement for vocational and college prep. There was a high percentage of students who took the honors and AP classes and graduated from high school with college credits already under their belt. The students were polite and respectful to adults and law enforcement. The administrative, the administration, teachers, and staff were vested in everyone's success. Beachwood excellence and Beachwood pride. There was no extra time for any other focus. There were true friendships. In essence, they learned about and celebrated their similarities and differences. Their focus was not on race nor gender. Students still stay in touch with each other, knowing about each other's successful careers, marriage, kids, et cetera. It was beautiful. It was Beachwood schools. It was unique. Contrasted with today's school system, superintendent, school board, school administration, the decision makers. Let's start with the website, beachwoodschools.org. Here's the curri, you have the curriculum page, you have two links, the curriculum page and the educational equity page. The website has a menu item for curri, uh, the website has a menu item for curriculum that doesn't mention anything about curriculum. Why? Because if a lot more of the residents knew about the mess that you made of this school's system via the curriculum and policy, you all would probably lose your position in the district. Many school districts in Ohio are now hiding their curriculum from its residents because they're teaching students to become bigots toward their peers, adults, and law enforcement. Many school districts within the, within this congressional district are on board with advocating, funding, and teaching young students the how-to about changing their gender, child pornography, and pedophilia, and where to find those websites, what sex toys to purchase, and how to use that which is purchased. Parents are not being told that their child is being taught that at school. And the teachers and librarians are being exempted from criminal prosecution. Regarding the educational equity piece, it appears that the superintendent and you and the school board members grew up so white that you don't even know the damage that your decisions have caused previous, current, and future generations of Beachwood students whose parents just wanted them to qualify to attend great universities. Instead, you convince yourselves that blacks are oppressed and that it is your job to stop the oppression. How have now, have you now looked at the results to realize what you did was immoral and had the opposite effect? Within Beachwood schools, black kids are turning against white people of all ages. And white kids are hating their parents and their success and their heritage and calling them racist, only because you don't understand the black race. You attempted to fix something that for all intents and purposes, years ago, was in reality not even broken. You just convinced yourself that it was broken. It was never your job. You got out of your lane. Your job was to provide students with the environment to be well-rounded and educationally successful. Now, the residents with kids who did find out about your deviant curriculum, they pulled their kids out as fast as they could. More are, many more are withdrawing your kids because the school system has lost control of the classroom environment. In the document- In the document for critical race theory, your stated goal is to make children advocates, I mean activists, in their own home. What does that mean? Why are you creating an advers, uh, trying to create an adversarial relationship, relationship between parents and child when that is the relationship that needs to be strengthened? This child, school-parent relationship and you intrinsically, intrinsically just advocating the kids to just be adversarial to their parents is nuts. This is nuts. And one of the things, let me tell you something. I'm a professional as well. I grew up in corporate America. I've met people like you all every day. You all don't know nothing about black people, but you, you have to steal. You think you can make rules for black people. Black kids in Beachwood schools, when they were growing up, all these decades until you all came along, they didn't look at race or gender. Very successful black people, very successful. But what did you do? You decided, instead of looking at Beachwood data, you decided to put us nothing with George Floyd and everybody else that got killed, then it had nothing to do with Beachwood. Nothing. So what did you do? You put in stuff like critical race theory and all this other garbage that first of all is none of your business during this whole thing.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry to interrupt, but just in the fairness, I stopped here at three minutes and you've been, I've let you go a little bit longer, you've gone over four minutes.
Just let her finish. Let her finish. This is, come on now.
How many black folks do you have that have never seen a heart?
I did a lot of work in my mouth that I can't accept, you know?
No, and that's the problem. You don't have left people how to handle, it was nothing for you all to do here. Now you have kids not liking their own parents. You have black kids that are now racist against their peers. We never saw that. You all went down a road because of what you see nationally. It had nothing to do with Beachwood. Now you're teaching, and now you've got school systems in this congressional district telling them how to have anal sex, and this is what your self-sex education. Oh, every, oh, they're teaching the gender, yeah, okay.
I'm going to cut you off. I'm going to cut you off.
The gender unicycle is in Shaker, is in all the cities.
Again, this isn't a, this isn't a back and forth, but I take, I take extreme exception to almost everything that you said because, because your premise is wrong. This administration and this board is, is committed to equity for every student in this district. You can shake your heads and no out there. We are committed, we are committed, we are every way we can.
No.
This board is committed to every, for every student that attends Beachwood schools.
What you read in the book-
Thank you.
What you read in the book-
Thank you. Next.
....................................
Oh, actually, before I start, Dr. Hardest, the, um, I pulled up that policy number. It's 2240, um, and the sentence referring back to my earlier comment, oh, should I say my name and address again? Not yet.
No, sir.
So, uh, referring back to my earlier comments, it's policy 2240 regarding controversial issues. The sentence that appears that is being struck, stricken from the record is, uh, or stricken from the policy is, "In the discussion of any issue, a teacher may express a personal opinion but shall identify it as such and must not express such an opinion for the purpose of persuading students to his or her point of view." That sentence, I think, is critical to education and it appears that Beachwood schools are striking that from policy for teachers.
I'll take a look at it. Thank you for referring to it.
Thank you. So, uh, my name is Jonathan Broadbent, 3362 Bell Harbor. As I mentioned earlier, I did not plan on speaking today, but I guess due to my position in the community and being known as a somewhat vocal, uh, person and, uh, dependable and, I don't know, trustworthy and what have you, um, some people have approached me feeling comfortable speaking to me and asking me to speak on their behalf because they fear retribution if they speak for themselves. That's an unfortunate position, I think, for all of us. Um, I would suggest that as a school board, you should want to have teachers and staff and students and parents who are comfortable approaching you with any issue. As it stands, you do not. I have a great number, I was very surprised by the volume of people who communicated with me over the past week pursuant to the upcoming, um, event on 311. Among them, this is a side note, I don't know if anybody knows this, it probably does not have any relevance, but it is operating under the radar for most folks throughout the city of Beachwood. You know how people can gravitate to strange and interesting things? The number 311 is used to signify the KKK. The, not, the letter K is the 11th number, so KKK members use that apparently to identify themselves and show commiseration and appreciation for white supremacy and KKK. That's come to my attention and it's leading to some new element of fear and anxiety about the program. Separate from that, and that's just, it's probably incidental and, and probably innocuous, but, um, we get all sorts of concern about this thing. A great number of people, good, bad, ugly, or broken, people know that they can rely on my integrity. Uh, my involvement in the city of Beachwood leadership in close proximity to education and community make people feel comfortable talking to me. That's my takeaway from the last week. Over the last several days, I've heard from teachers, faculty, staff, parents, grandparents, taxpayers, and people of all stripes, colors, backgrounds, white, black, wealthy and otherwise, and there is fear and anger. Teachers would like to teach but feel physically and financially threatened into following this doctrine associated with the comments this woman made earlier, um, expressing concern about, uh, their safety and what's being advocated for. You should know this as a school board. You have staff who are very uncomfortable and very displeased with the trajectory of this school district and feel unsafe voicing their opinions. This all revolves around race. Parents are afraid for their kids and students, and I understand, students are very afraid to speak up for fear of reprisal. That can take many forms. Um, there are, there's increased and drastically heightened racial tension that I've been made aware of. I've been told a number of circumstances that are significant and jaw dropping here in Beachwood, it's heartbreaking. I'm here to tell you that what you're doing is, in the eyes of many in the community, not working. And moving further in that direction will break things further. I suggest that this upcoming event on 311 is problematic at best. I suggest that, in my opinion, it's outside of your lane, it's outside of the purview of a school board to, to broach into moral and social character and to advocate for developing activists within the community. It is certainly within the purview of the school district to formulate events around important civic matters such as race relations. However, it's been my understanding that that dialogue has been severely one-sided. For instance, the critical race theory has a counterpoint to it. And we in the city of Cleveland have probably the single best resource in the country when it comes to, um, to race relations. Peter Curzonow, I've heard him speak a bunch of times, he's a lawyer downtown Cleveland with Vanish, he is the longest standing member of the U.S. Council on Civil Rights. And he is diametrically strongly opposed to what you are doing this Thursday. He and many people like him will speak vocally in public against the doctrine that you are bringing to Beachwood schools on 311. There is a counter to that, which is showing tremendous success, and that is the 1776 Unity Project, brought to us by a vast array of very successful black intellectuals, business leaders, military leaders, all of the, uh, some of the greatest of the great have gotten together and said, "We don't agree with the 17, the 16, 19 critical race theory, that ball of wax. Let's do something that's more, that's more unified." I would encourage you to consider that if you pursue this course, at least please allow the other conversation to also take place within the city of Beachwood schools. Thank you.
Good evening. Name is Mayor Cohen, 2787 Silbury Road. Thank you for, uh, your speech, both madams. I was particularly impressed, um, with the last madam's speech. I was not going to speak tonight, but she spoke up, I'm going to speak up. Um, I grew up in Cleveland Heights. I'm mostly colorblind. I don't know the difference between white, yellow, pink, brown, dark brown, light brown. I'm not sure what color I am. I don't want to be a color. I want to be an American. I live in America, I was born in America. My mask is American. I don't consider myself a Republican or a Democrat. I try to be just an average Joe. Well, that's, I can't say that now, but, an average guy with some common sense. And common sense to me, and I think that almost everybody here will agree, common sense means, means treating people with respect regardless of anything, their gender, their race, their nationality, their, their color, their creed. If we all treat people with respect, we don't have to have seminars regarding who's black. Well, you're black, ma'am. Or do you feel good now? No. Do you feel good if I call you black? No. How about you? Does anybody feel good if I call them black? How about you? You want to be Jewish? You don't want anything, you want to be an American, right? You want to just be happy. And we can all be happy Americans, as Americans. So I'm asking the school, when you throw this on us, mandatory assembly, and you use activism and gender inequality and then you stuff it down our kids' throats, we, we want it to be really a nice, happy, hopeful flower thing and raise our kids happy and colorblind, but we're scared. That's what we are. We're scared because we don't know what you're going to teach them. And you make it mandatory and it's about race. Nowadays, we're just two stones grinding against each other when we don't have to be. We could just all get along, not screaming about race whether we're white, black, Jewish, Catholic, Muslim, let's just get along. And that doesn't mean mandatory assemblies. It means show people how to get along. Work out with each other, work with each other, play with each other, have happy neighbors and happy people. Not forcing this culture down our throats. I'm not a white supremacist. I'm not a Black Lives Matter activist. I try to just be in the middle. And I would implore you to really, before March 11, think very carefully about how this email was worded. You will find that there's a lot of people that want to be up here that are not. They want to convince you guys not to stuff it down our throats. Talk to us. Let's form a plan where we can all get together and be happy. Thank you.
Hi, everybody. My name is Tiffany Broadbent. Can you hear me all right? My address is 3362 Bell Harbor Boulevard. Like my husband Jonathan, I was not planning to speak tonight, but I was asked to speak by many, many people. I was floored, frankly, by how many people called, emailed, texted, whatever, the both of us saying, "I can't speak about this because my kids will feel the grudges of it. I can't speak about this because my friends will turn their backs on me. I can't speak about this because if I show that I don't fully agree with critical race theory and the seminars that come with it and the need for activism on the part of my kids, if I show that I don't agree with that, I'm going to be called a racist." So all the people who talk to us and ask us to come here, it is not a few people, it's a lot of people. It's parents of kids in the high school, in the middle school, in Hilltop, in Wrighton, in the preschool. People who have babies who plan to one day attend Beachwood schools are scared about this, they're upset about this. Now, it's totally possible that maybe we completely misread the point of the seminar, but based on the language that was sent out in that email- but based on the language that was sent out in that email, parents are very, very worried that this is going to add to the tensions that they're seeing, tensions that many of them feel are being used to push one political viewpoint. Now, people get upset when people say, "Oh, this is a political solution to race," and they say, "How, how dare you say that racism is political?" It's not what these families are saying to me. They're saying that these particular solutions that you seem to be pushing in many different avenues are very political, and they are not the only way to look at it. Parents, they're going to be tense, they're so scared, because once I say that I don't want my kids hearing exactly what's in this presentation, or that I wanna know what's in it ahead of time before I agree, people are gonna think that either I'm a racist, or some people are gonna say, "Well, you're not a racist, but you're enabling racism," like, you know, by not wanting to hear this. Or maybe you're not as bad as the enablers, but, you know, you're, you're at least, uh, you're denied, you know, you're not aware that it's there, you just can't be bothered to care. And that's not true. So many people in Beechwood care about this, and they want it to be addressed, and they want their kids to feel comfortable being part of a solution. But this is not the only solution that's out there. Now, the way this email was worded, maybe that's the problem here, is that the way it was worded gives people the impression that it is part of a critical race theory philosophy. Part of that philosophy says that you must be an activist, and if you are not an activist, you are an enemy. Parents are very worried about this, because many of them care deeply about a lot of these issues, and so do their kids, but they can't even question it. Kids in the middle school, kids in the high school, try to bring things up with their teachers, and they're shouted down. Teachers call us, in tears, they're worried about this, they don't like what they're being pushed to teach, because it's very one-sided, and it leaves no room for anyone to explore or discuss. Teachers, I'm sorry, parents that contacted us want, above all, for this seminar not to be mandatory. They want the chance to look at it, not just a paragraph description, but to actually see it. So, if you have footage from what staff heard, that's similar to what the kids will hear, maybe they can look at that, or some other materials that you might have, but they want to opt into it. They wanna say, "Okay, here's this thing that's outside the curriculum, the school district thinks this is important, let me evaluate this and see if I want my child to participate." They should have that right. Above all the two things that they wanted me to make sure to make clear to you. Number one, I already said, which is that not agreeing with this doesn't mean they're racists, and that's the thing they really don't want to be accused of, above all else. Number two is that sitting in those seats does not give you the right to indoctrinate other people's children. It's not to be the right to tell other people's children that they have to be activists for this particular issue. That's a family decision. Information about different viewpoints is great, information about, here's what a lot of people in the country believe right now, here's what a lot of people think is a solution, that's fine, talk about it, bring it up, show them other viewpoints to them, and let, let the parents be the guide in what they choose to do. Thank you very much.
Hi, guys. Valerie Charms Mason, uh, 23605 East Sillsby. Um, I didn't plan on speaking tonight, except I have just a couple things. First of all, I would like to be in attendance if my child is mandated, uh, to go to this assembly. I would like to attend in person and watch, because I wanna be sure that I know exactly what they're being told, so that I can go home and do damage control. I, as a citizen of this city, I was raised in Shaker Heights, Ohio. I've talked to you guys over the past year about my concerns with escalating racism. As a Jewish woman, I was taught from the very beginning that when you start singling people out, there's a problem. There was a riots dog fire, and that is what's going on here. I am upset that my children are being told to feel guilty about being white, to start looking at people the way they look before they're supposed to do anything else. What happened to meritocracy? What happened to do your best work, be kind? I must tell my kids that every day. Do one thing, be kind. Do you know, before any of this started, one of my kids came home and said, "You know, I gotta tell you, I'm kinda sick of all this race stuff." You know, all they do is talk about how we're all so different. He goes, "We're really not that different, can't we just like, you know what I mean? He brought this up before any of this stuff happened." You know, I, I was a student teaching about race relations in college. I have dated men of many different, uh, you know, races and class. I think what this gentleman was trying to say, and I would, wouldn't drink a, correcting, it's not that we don't see color, that is, that is the thing that irritates. We see color, everybody's a different color in here. The good news is, it's not relevant.
Color is beautiful.
It's not relevant. We are taught to assess people on their merits, who are they? Are they kind? Are they nice? Do we find common ground, or do we walk away? We don't look at somebody and judge them before they've even started. I am horrified, I literally was like, "I think I need blood pressure medication, and I don't have high blood pressure," but, um, before my kids are going to this assembly, either there's gonna be a pause, and you guys are gonna step back for a minute and let the parents reevaluate, or I will be happy to attend in person on behalf of all the parents that are concerned with coming in here, and I would be glad to write up my report. Uh, and one last thing, I asked about this months ago, and I'm asking again. This community has stopped talking to each other. We started standing on little pedestals and telling everybody else who they are and what they're supposed to be doing, and I don't like it. I don't like it for my kids, I don't like it from the school board, I don't like it from anybody. I recommend, as soon as the weather starts getting nice, late April, maybe, early May, let's have a community discussion. Let's invite the families to come and talk to each other. I said, "You know, how silly would it be if we all met on the Beechwood football field with our masks on, and every 10 seconds we had to walk up to somebody else and say, 'Hi, I'm a conservative,' and, uh, something else about me. Great to meet you," and everybody starts laughing, and then you walk up to them, "Hi, I'm such and such." I mean, this is like kindergarten. I don't know what happened to us. We stopped talking to each other, we stopped being concerned about celebrating each person's individuality and all that. We're, we're stuck on who looks like what, and I'm, I'm, my kids will not be mandated to go to anything that I don't know what it's about as it relates to race, 'cause it's very important to me. Thank you for listening. By the way, can I attend? May I attend?
Mrs. Mason, the, the email that I think a lot of you are referring to, two, two things, just so you, just, uh, to make sure it's clear. The, this is an online event, so no one can attend in person, because there is no in-person, it's online, and the link was in the email itself.
Okay, so I can watch it, and then let, you know, tell them about it?
There is nothing to hide, the link was literally sent to the public, so, um, yes, you actually can.
I thought it was in person, I thought that's what Adam told me, but even still, I'll make sure to look at it. Thank you.
Hello, excuse me, hello, my name is Wayne Dancie, D-A-N-C-I-E. I'm at 1661 Warrensville Center Road. I am not a Beechwood resident, I'm South Euclid. In August of 1970, I was forced to integrate Murray Hill. For those of you from Cleveland, you know Murray Hill was a very hostile environment for anyone other than native, uh, first or second generation Italians. I spent three years at Murray Hill, sixth, seventh, eighth grade. I'm the oldest of six. All, well, all six of us attended Murray Hill, five or six graduated from college. I'm born to a single mother, raised in Cleveland. We never had discussions about race. We succeeded. My entire family never talking about race. I have a, uh, there are two CPAs, there's an attorney in our family, there's a judge, business owner. I am so sick of talking about race. Why are you introducing to our kids? Our kids graduated from Tinstan High School. It was not as racially balanced as Beechwood. It was only about nine, 10% minority students at all. They never had a problem with race. I've asked them, they have told me they've had more problems as an adult in this culture these last five to 10 years than they ever had as a student. We live on the West Side, we live next to people that were self-proclaimed white racists, never had a problem with them. I don't get what's going on. This is madness. What are you teaching the kids? This is the communist cultural revolution of the late 60s and early 70s, where you turn youth, which is against the fifth, uh, which is against the fifth, uh, commandment, against their parents. What is this stuff? We are Americans. We wanna be Americans. We wanna raise our kids to achieve. Merit is what caused us to achieve. We go out, we, we, we battle. And when I mean battling, physical battle, we just do our best. We train our kids to do their best. That's what matters most. Sir, I don't agree with you on not being race conscious. Everybody know, there'll be a colored difference, that's no big deal. The key is, the young lady said it, it does not matter. A person's color only matter to the person that it matters. It doesn't matter to me. I have friends from every walk life, I mean, we shared bedrooms together. I can't even tell you all the experiences. Our kids the same. When Betsy called and asked me what I thought of this, I was horrified. Now I look at my grandson, who's four years old, and I'm very concerned. If he's gonna be taught this stuff, we'll pull him out of school for sure. And we will not subject our kids to this kinda stuff. You're prickling black kids 'cause you're telling them there's a problem with you. Then you're prickling white kids 'cause you're telling them there's a problem with you. Then you're prickling. So, as a concerned parent, grandparent now, and I think that we as a country are way off track. Martin Luther King, everybody likes to quote him, but he said, "The content of a man's character matters most," not the color of his skin. I went through that, I have a grievous breach. I have done everything he talked about. We've been to, uh, what is it, places in Georgia, mountain, or whatever, Stone, Stone Mountain in Georgia. Our kids have been judged by their peers based on who they are. This, this, this whole critical theory, philosophy, and that race is only one of the legs, is very deconstructive to what made America. Equity is outcome. You can't judge outcome. Why? Because every individual has unique, God-given talents and abilities. So, how you gonna come up with an outcome? We want you to police the opportunities that our kids have. Make sure that they have the same opportunities to learn, and with that, we succeed. So, I thank you.
Uh, Dr. Weiss, there's just one more.
Okay.
Shelley Zemelman, uh, 23401 Green Lawn, just wrote now. I, I don't know if she didn't finish her thoughts, or was trying to respond to something, but she just wrote now.
All right, thank you. Anybody else?
Dr. Weiss, I, I was just waiting, just in case, uh, board members had, uh, comment. The, I guess, just a, just a brief response. I mean, there's a lot, a lot shared by folks about their experiences and their beliefs about things. I do want to, um, I don't wanna end the meeting without clarifying a few things, um, because the, the district that some of you are describing and the presentation that many of you describing bears no resemblance to what I see on a daily basis and what is, uh, what was presented to our staff, uh, what, and what will be presented to students. We, um, we're concerned about, we're concerned about the wellbeing of our students particularly right now with regard to, you know, coming into, uh, beyond a year and a pandemic, and, uh, the issue of trauma is, is very real. Uh, our staff see it, our administrators see it, board members see it, and I imagine many of you who are parents, uh, see it in its, in its different manifestations. So, our intent with this and our goals, uh, the reason we reached out to Chardelle Hollins, uh, is because this, uh, she is a, a social worker. She has, uh, a depth of experience working in schools, she has worked with youth, uh, she is, uh, trained in suicide prevention, and these are the things that we, uh, that, that have her, made her stand out to us. We happen to know her from work that she's done in our school and a variety of, uh, CBC schools, so Sugar Valley Conference, our athletic conference. The, the objectives of this, the objectives of this presentation are to understand trauma in a broad and inclusive way, to recognize how the brain and the body respond to stress and to trauma, to learn effective strategies to support youth who are exposed to trauma, and to define historical trauma and, uh, discuss its implications on persons of color. When she presented to our staff, um, the focus of that presentation was very much in helping our staff understand what trauma is, how they see it, um, how they may see it and see its manifestations between, among their colleagues, so not just focusing on our students, but recognizing that even among our workforce. Uh, people need support, they need help, and our colleagues, colleagues can provide that to one another. And then obviously, the reason we're all here is because we need to support our students and their families as well. Um, and, uh, so her focus was very much on, on, um, on those topics, and, um, and that is what we wanna bring to your students. Um, when we talk about being, uh, and, uh, a lot of her focus was on being an ally for one another, including an ally for one's peers in the classroom, for student, for, I'm sorry, for teachers to be allies for their students as well. So, I have two colleagues with me, Ms. Lauren Broder.